Good morning. We are calling to order our scheduled study session for today. My name is Elizabeth Glidden and I am the host of today's study session. I am joined by council members Bender, Yang, Andrew Johnson, Quincy, Palmasano, and Gordon. I do know other council members are attending. We had some conflicts for some in the early portion of this session, so we are going to go ahead and begin. This session is televised so that members of the public can watch this either now, but also be able to watch it via web at any time that they feel is available. The subject of our study session today is on the Working Families Agenda. The city council and mayor began talking about proposed Working Families Agenda earlier this year in the beginning of April 2015. Several weeks ago, the city released a draft policy framework for earned, safe, and sick time, fair scheduling, and has also talked about how we can be a better partner on addressing wage theft. Since that time, we have had robust conversation with so many generous workers, businesses, small and large, and other employers that have been giving their input. And I just want to say, we are really valuing your input. It is helping us so much understand what resonates, what in these proposals may work, and frankly, also what may not work. And we are looking for how we can incorporate your feedback into a revised or a draft ordinance at some time in the near future, a revised policy proposal. Some items, I would say, it's even fair to say, we're hearing consensus from workers and from businesses on changes they think would be productive to continuing the conversation and looking for what might be some shared solutions for addressing these workplace issues. The intent of this study session is not to delve so much into the details of policy solutions, but to understand better what are the issues that we're trying to address? What are the workplace conditions that are being faced by workers and employees? And also some ways that some employers have been trying to work on these issues. So with that, I would like to welcome David Frank, our Director of Economic Development from CPED, and ask him to start our session and take it from here. Thank you very much, Mr. Frank.
Thank you, Council Vice President Glidden. And council members, good morning. I'm David Frank from CPED, and I'm here to get us started, get you started, on your study session this morning. Just as a quick reminder of why we're here, in addition to what Council Vice President Glidden just said, council gave staff direction in April of this year to work together with the council members and their offices on bringing forward proposed ordinances in 2015. And so to that end, we're here to share with you much of the research and many of the experts who we have been consulting with to inform the development of those ordinances. And just as a quick reminder, the departments involved are not just CPED, but health, human resources, civil rights, the city attorney's office, the city coordinator, intergovernmental relations, and human resources. I said that already. So you will hear from some experts today from outside city government. That's always good to hear from. And if time permits, at the end, we will give you an update on some of the Minneapolis-specific information which we have gathered. In case time does not permit, that information is both posted on the city's website and was emailed to council members and their staff yesterday. So with that, I will tell you that it's time to get started. So I'll ask my colleague Gretchen Musicant to come up, and she'll wind up introducing Assistant Commissioner of Health Jean Ayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Musicant.
Morning. Thank you, Council Vice President Glidden, and members of the committee. Gretchen Musicant, I'm the Commissioner of Health here in the city of Minneapolis. Early in the Governor Dayton's administration, the State Health Department, under the leadership of Commissioner Ed Ellinger and Assistant Commissioner Jean Ayers, embarked on a planning process that involved public health folks, but also healthcare providers, health plans, community-based organizations, to create something called Healthy People 2020. It's a plan for how do we get to an even healthier place here in Minnesota. During that process, it was recognized that there is really a profound impact that social conditions have on health, much stronger than healthcare has on health. And especially a profound impact on equity and addressing disparities. So out of that work came recommendations that there be more efforts to address health in all policies, so looking at health in policies that don't seem on the face of them to be about health. White papers were developed to help us see the connection between minimum wage and health, and more recently, paid leave and health. And so it is because of that work that we have invited Assistant Commissioner Jean Ayers to come and speak with us today about the proposals that you are considering.
Thank you very much, and welcome, Assistant Commissioner. And just as you're getting set up, I'm going to ask if the clerk could help me set up speaker management.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the invitation. I really feel privileged and fortunate that you have taken on this issue and are looking into it and exploring it. As the Minneapolis City Council and the Community Health Board for the city of Minneapolis, you really have a unique and important opportunity at being leaders in, as Gretchen mentioned, health in all policies, where we are looking at how we can advance health equity by considering and understanding all the different opportunity pathways that create the opportunities for health for people. Thank you. So you join me because you're all part of the public health enterprise. Public health is what we do collectively, what we as a society do collectively, to assure the conditions in which all people can be healthy. And really, what are those conditions? Again, as Gretchen mentioned, only about 10% of the conditions that assure health are related to the healthcare sector. The rest are really social and economic factors and health behaviors and the environment, which are the context which people live within. When you just think about that, the WHO describes this as the socioeconomic factors or the social determinants of health, and they include things like peace and safe communities, shelter, education, income, and basically like security and stable ecosystem, and social justice and equity. And so we usually start with where are we? And in Minnesota, overall, we're doing very, very well. We're the second highest life expectancy at birth. We have lowest infant mortality. We're the sixth highest life expectancy after age 65. And we have the highest rated health of seniors and the highest rated healthcare system in terms of access and quality and cost. But in fact, the opportunity to be healthy isn't available equally for everyone in our state. And what that brings us to is, I'd just like kind of to stop with one statistic here, and that is, in Minnesota, an African-American or Native American infant has more than twice the chance of dying in the first year of life as a white baby. And when we look at that, and we look at this a lot, and we're like, why do we have these persistent disparities? Why could this possibly be the case? We have world-class healthcare system. But we really begin to recognize that it isn't really just the healthcare system. As I pointed out in the first slide, it actually gets to what are those opportunity pathways that assure the conditions for people's health? And I use infant mortality. It's a very sensitive, first of all, it's one that I think we all care about, and then also is one that is a very sensitive indicator in terms of how a country is doing. And it's used for international comparisons and state and city comparisons. But in fact, health disparities in infant mortality are really only the tip of the iceberg. We see these same disparities in every different health condition, heart disease, and cancer, and hypertension, and obesity, and COPD, and STDs, and all the initials. We have the same patterns in all of these conditions. And the thing that's so important, I think, for you as a community health board, is that these disparities, which we have in Minnesota and are very concerning, are urgent to consider how to address because there is a direct connection between sort of the systemic disadvantage and health inequities which we're seeing and the future health of our community. This is actually predictive of where we're headed if we don't figure out and address these disparities. So while I quoted a lot of numbers of Minnesota doing very well, the disparities are going and are being experienced by populations and our state numbers overall. And so that really brings us to why are these happening? And I had the iceberg of all the different disparities, but really what you look at is what are the conditions that help create the opportunity for health? And these are, some of them, social exclusion, unemployment, poverty, school suspensions, incarceration, food unaffordability, or not healthy food being available, and things like paid leave. There's a description, basically, this is kind of just a summary of what it looks like for communities of opportunity, where parks and trails, and there's affordable, healthy food, and you know, fair wages, and job opportunities, and safe work practices, and benefits, and financial institutions that are community-focused, and schools performing well. Those are the kinds of things that help and are correlated to high, better health outcomes. But communities with low opportunity, and that community can be geographic or can be a population, have less of these things. And they create things like limited park or recreation opportunities, lack of affordable, healthy food, and lack of job opportunities, or again, in this case, paid leave. So there's a whole list. But what I'd like to point out about this particular slide is that the protective factors in the community of opportunity help create good health. In the communities and populations that don't have that, they don't have the positive side, and they also often have the negative impact of less safe neighborhoods, or less opportunity for benefits, unsafe work conditions. So it's magnified and gets then physically manifested in our health outcomes. So what is that? I just wanted to use one definition. At the end of your handout, I have just some definitions for both the terms around paid leave and paid sick, as well as health disparities and health inequities. But just to go to health inequities, it's really the difference in health status between more socially advantaged and less socially advantaged groups that are caused by systematic differences in these conditions that effectively determine health. And sick leave and paid leave is actually one of these conditions. So we ask ourselves, as we're wrestling with this very wicked problem, what are the roots of the inequities? Well, disparities basically are not due, as I had said, to a lack of access to healthcare or poor individual choices. They're mostly the result of policy decisions that are systematically disadvantaging some populations over others, particularly populations of low income, populations of color, American Indians, GLTQ. And when you can do like an analysis that begins to see a pattern by race, then we can start to say that's structural racism. So the point of this is really that the greatest potential for change is actually in the policy development area. And that's why I was so pleased that you've invited us, and you're actually embarking on a health in all policies approach, as we begin to bring a health analysis into a broader set of policy decisions. So the kinds of ways that we kind of break into that work is that we start to say, what's working? What policies and practices and processes are creating the inequities within our organizations and then more broadly? And where can we see some patterns? And then we just sort of develop this practice of asking these kinds of questions. And that's actually how we define health in all policies. So that brought us to the legislature, asking us, after we brought the Advancing Health Equity Report and Healthy Minnesota 2020 reports to the legislature in 2013 and 14, and they began to ask us to bring a health analysis into more of the policy debates and conversations. So there was a, we did at their request, a white paper on paid leave and health, and brought that to them in March of 2015. And basically, it's pretty much a review of the literature with some of the Minnesota data, summarizing the evidence on associations between paid leave, and that included both paid sick and paid family leave, and health. And it looks at who has and who does not have paid leave in terms of what inequities might be being created. And what did we find? Basically, this discussion is of course part of this understanding these relationships between economic security and health. But in summary, for the findings, and I've handed out the white paper for all of you if you want to delve into it in more depth, my presentation, I'll mostly be telling you what we've concluded coming from that paper and that review. But there is basically a strong link between health and access to paid leave, to paid leave. And that paid leave is being used for your personal care and for the health of family members. It's really important for working families to be able to have paid leave. And when you look at the whole report and everything, it really is something that, you know, your mom might have told you. If you're sick, stay home, you know, until you're better. Don't spread it around. I mean, that's basically, I mean, so sometimes it's fun to be in public health and then find the data that supports the thing my mom said. But anyway, I wouldn't want her to know that that's what I'm doing. So first of all, the next slide is just a summary of the youngest children and our babies. So babies and families benefit when there is paid leave. Parents spend more time with their new babies. There is a higher initiation and duration of breastfeeding, and we have a preponderance of data about the value of breastfeeding and the connection with family bonding, with infection, with immunity, with obesity, and for both the child and the mother. And so that is a known. Paid parental leave is associated with lower infant mortality, better infant health, higher vaccination rates, more timely well-child visits, and higher maternal physical health, and lower depression, better mental health. And I just want to point that out because we have an additional whole set of data and studies that we've been doing around adverse childhood experiences. And one of the very powerful experiences that happen in a child's life of maternal depression actually has a health impact throughout the whole lifespan. So that is something that I wanted to just highlight. So then what's the value for the working family? We've heard about the baby, now what about the working family as a whole? Workers are able to care for their family members. The family members, the children, have better school performance. They're more likely to visit a healthcare provider in a timely manner. They are more likely to use and have a higher use of preventive services like cancer screening, again, in a timely manner. So being public health prevention is, again, my mom, worth a pound of cure. And basically, they have, what I think is interesting, there's a lower use of emergency rooms for themselves, their children, their families. There was one study through the Commonwealth Fund that basically says 31% of workers who make less than $35,000 a year delayed medical care for a family member, compared to 7% of those making in the range of $100,000 or more. So that's, when we've been asked over and over, why do we have these disparities in health, or healthcare, or in prevention, or in cancer rates? This is one of the pathways. So then what's the value to the overall community? Basically, a person with paid sick time, we found, is less likely to go to work or school while they're sick, and they recover faster from illness. We had a study that we looked at some of our outbreak data, and sick Minnesota food workers were the source of 208 foodborne illness outbreaks. And that amounted to 2,996 illnesses between 2004 and 2013, costing between $1.6 million to $2 million in estimated costs for those illnesses and people. So the question had come up in an earlier conversation, well, how many of those people actually had sick leave? And what we do know is only about 30% of people in that industry would have paid sick leave. And we don't know the answer to that question. What we do know is that, for some reason, they felt that they needed to be at work. And our data would suggest and show that the only, like, one of the main reasons that people do go to work sick is because they are concerned about financial obligations. There was a survey of California workers, and 44% of them who were parents sent their children to school sick because they didn't have sick days. So we know that people come to work and/or school, and they spread respiratory and other diseases. We know they aren't able to take care of themselves. And we recognize that when care gets delayed and/or it becomes more expensive, or there are a spread like this, that there are higher uses than of public assistance and publicly-funded healthcare. One of the other things that we found is that when we looked at outbreaks, I said 40% of the outbreaks in that one Minnesota study were, you know, of the food outbreaks, were related to food workers. But even beyond food, and GI, gastrointestinal illnesses, in another study that we had, 67% of the gastrointestinal illness outbreaks were located in nursing homes, assisted living, and childcare settings in just a seven-year period. So these are all places where we have a lot of customer, a lot of contact with the public, and have a lot of vulnerable people as well. So then the question comes, what is the impact on employers? And how do we have to weigh that set of considerations into the benefits to babies and working families and the community at large? And basically, we found in the review of the literature, and there's a lot of references into some data from the Commonwealth Fund, that there is improved recruitment, retention, and morale in workplaces that offer paid leave. There are lower rates of occupational injury, and I think that's a very helpful statistic because it's kind of like a buried cost at one point, but it's, there was a study showing that there's 28% less chance of a non-fatal work injury in the industries that have paid leave. So, or in the organizations that have paid leave, even in those industries. So that's 28% reduction of work injuries in that study that was reported. I think that the other thing to note is, it's kind of one of these vicious cycles. Many of these industries are also the same industries that have higher work injury rates overall, so things kind of keep reinforcing each other. Employees are less likely to spend work time worrying about, working about, worrying about family members' health, and there are some reports then and summaries of the impact on productivity around that. And probably, I said, a lot of these things are things that are intuitive and/or your mom or grandmother would say, but here's one that is not so intuitive, and I think is, I put it in blue because of that. And that is that for people who have no paid sick time, people who have no paid sick time actually end up more likely to take six or more days unpaid, I mean, off sick, miss more than six days than people with paid sick time. So that's basically, I mean, I know that feels, it seems like a surprise. You'd think that if they couldn't afford it, they wouldn't. But this gets to the point about prevention, checking on follow-up, the decrease in stress, the ability to plan, those types of things that are overall benefiting. So then when we were looking at, we talked about the benefit to babies, the benefit to the working family, the benefit to the community at large, and the benefit to the employers. Now we've said who has and who does not have access. So from national data, six out of 10 full-time workers have access to paid leave, or paid sick leave, and one out of four part-time workers. And I just want to say that because that is not a good number anyway. I mean, that is not a number, I mean, that's just not enough if we're trying to have the benefit from paid sick leave accrue to everyone. In the paid family leave, one out of 10 have paid leave. So then we talked about, or looked at, who in Minnesota by occupation, how does this play out? And if you're in the computer engineering, science, management, business, financial operations, or if you're a healthcare practitioner, a doctor, or a technician, you're more likely, ranging from oh, 70-some percent to close to 85%, likely to have paid sick leave and/or opportunities. However, if you're in the service industry, you're more like 32% or 34% likely to have paid leave. And who's in the service industry? So in that category, we have food service, waiters, personal care attendants, medical assistants, and childcare workers. So again, the people with a lot of public contact and contact with the most vulnerable parts of our community. This is just a quick rundown of estimated sort of scope and amounts of people in these different categories. And we looked at food preparation and serving-related, about 79% of the people do not have sick leave in that category. That's about, in the state of Minnesota, 180,000 some people, and the mean wage for them is around $20,000, little over $20,000. If you look at that, and personal care and healthcare support, you can see kind of sort of, these are the people least likely, these industries, least likely to have paid leave. And of these, healthcare, personal care, food prep, for sure, and maybe some of the building people have a lot of public contact. When we were looking at this, we also wondered, well, how old are these workers? And maybe this is something, you know, my- And maybe this is something, you know, my college son said, but mom, I want to be able to, you know, take off a Friday or switch my schedule, and I want to be able to do this, and I want to be able to go to that concert and, and, and have flexibility in my schedule, and, you know, that's more important to me. And so I, we looked at the, we looked at the average age of people in these groups. And the Bureau of Labor Statistics says the average age for food service is actually 29 years old, and the average age for, and that ranges then for personal care to healthcare support is, is 43. So we're actually talking about working families. We're not talking about teenagers in college. I don't know why we're against college students, but we often, you know, students, people who are at a, at a transition in their, in their lives. These are, this is, this is where people are working. So then when we look at this by pay, by, by wages or income, less, people making less than $15 an hour, only 34% of people making less than $15, I mean, $15,000 a year, sorry, are, are, have eligibility for, for paid sick time. And at, but when we get to the 65,000 or over, 85% do. So again, whenever we're seeing these kinds of patterns and continuums, it helps us understand how we ended up with the disparities in health outcomes that we see. When we look at education, people with less than a high school education, and this is just mothers in this study, less than 20% of them have any kind of paid leave, whereas people with a BA or higher, I think we're close to 65% of them. And again, that's not, that's not a, you know, aspirational number. And so finally...